... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Let's have the roll call.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
And Madam Mayor, Mr. Pond, Mr. Matthews, and Ms. Davis have excused themselves for tonight, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the council study notes of August 21st? If there are none, they are approved as presented. We don't have any proclamations or ceremonies tonight, so we can move right into citizens' comments, and they're coming up the aisle right now. Dorothy Archer, are you here? I don't know. Sorry.
Dorothy Archer.
And your address?
3640 Marshall Street. Good evening, council, staff, and citizens. I am again addressing the concern about the 35-foot flat roof allowance for all residential zones excluding R1C and R3. I understand that Mr. Pond addresses the dates to be set for study sessions' agenda. I, as well as many others for whom I speak and am representing, that we feel that this is a matter of grave concern. All Wheat Ridge homeowners should be aware of this issue. When you presented the ADU's concern, you had an article of explanation in the Gazette newspaper. The citizens responded on the date it was presented in great numbers to express their concern. We feel this equally, if not more so, is just as important. I would guess 80% of the homeowners in Wheat Ridge have no idea of this 35-foot flat roof allowance and a dwelling being able to be built five feet from their property line. I would like to see a model made of the change that was awarded to R1C and R3 zones of a 15-foot bulk plane incorporation. Timing of setting a study session date and letting all of our homeowners know of its contents is of vital and extreme importance. We strive to keep Wheat Ridge to the sought-after desirable community that continues to offer affordable housing along with gracious friendly neighborhoods. Please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
We can move right into the agenda unless there are some changes in the agenda. Then let's just go forward. We start with the consent agenda, but I see there's only one item on it.
This is Resolution 33-2017. It's a resolution. The issue is, in 2000, Wheat Ridge Police Department entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the Juvenile Assessment Center to provide screening assessment and services to juveniles involved in the criminal justice system and to provide services to junior runways and other at-risk youth. The Juvenile Assessment Center has been operating under this IGA since 2000 and is now proposing No changes are proposed to the current funding formula. The 2016 assessment was $20,438. The 2017 assessment is the same, and the 2018 is $22,603. The funding formula is based on the juvenile population of Wheat Ridge relative to the rest of Jefferson County combined with actual usage. In 2016, 934 juveniles were taken to the JAC by the Wheat Ridge Police Department, putting the average cost per juvenile at $155. The JAC currently charges non-member agencies $450 per juvenile transported to the center. Is a motion in order?
Yes, please.
I move to approve Resolution 33-2017, a resolution approving a second amended, restated intergovernment agreement between the Juvenile Assessment Center and the City of Wheat Ridge to provide screening assessment and services to juveniles.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion. Apparently, there's some discussion.
Thank you. I just had a question for the city attorney. Based on the agreement, it indicates that this agreement will extend through July 31, 2049, and I'm just curious as to why do we have a contract that extends out that far and why not 2149? Why is it so far out in the future? And I understand that there is no obligation of future indebtedness, but what's with such a long contract into the future?
I'm actually not sure what the desire was for the length of time. Possibly the chief?
Is there any kind of limitation on how long a contract can be signed for, or is there...
No, there isn't. You know, we enter into long-term contracts for other purposes, so there's no artificial barrier. And so long as, as you point out, there's not a multi-year fiscal obligation problem, Tabor problem, then city has every right to enter into a multi-year agreement.
And so long as it has that no general obligation indebtedness clause in there, then we're not necessarily on the hook for any future fiscal years relative to this contract?
That's correct. And I can probably find the... If you've already found it, you'll probably find it.
Page 10, 27.
It's, uh... Looks like Roman numeral V. Is that right?
I'm looking at Part F, page 10 of 27, for the no general obligation indebtedness. But that...
Yeah.
It seems quite ways in the future, and I'm not sure if that gets us any sort of benefit to have that long of an agreement, or if that was some sort of particular reason to have it that far out. But as long as we're not obligating ourselves to future indebtedness, I'm okay with that.
No, and of course, we have a... There's a termination provision in Roman numeral B13. If you... I suppose the city could just choose to stop, you know, contributing and then get out of the agreement for that reason. I wasn't involved in the substantive negotiations on this agreement. I checked them for things like the Tabor compliance, but I don't know why they wanted that much time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Item number two, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill 16-2017, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 6025 West 40th Avenue from commercial one to residential one C, case number WZ1705, Shadow Homes. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from commercial one to residential one C for property located at 6025 West 40th Avenue. Proposed rezoning area includes two parcels with a total size of approximately 1/3 of an acre. The purpose of the zone change is to bring the property and its historical use as a residence into compliance with the zoning regulations. A zone change will also allow for future construction of an additional home pending approval of this zone change and an administrative subdivision review.
Thank you. This is an... I need an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1629.
1629. This is a public hearing. I'm opening that. Anybody stand who'd be who's testifying so that I can swear you in? If you're standing, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you swear affirm to tell the whole truth as you understand it? If so, answer "I do." Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Zach Wallace-Mendez, planner with the Community Development Department. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, city council does have jurisdiction to hear the case. As was mentioned by Mr. Urban, this case is a request for approval of a zone change from commercial one to residential one C on property located at 6025 West 40th Avenue. Property is outlined here in red. It is located on the north side of 40th Avenue, just west of Harland Street. Currently, there's a single-family house on the property along with a shed and detached garage. The current zoning on the property is commercial one. It is surrounded by residential properties, although the zoning is a bit more complex than that. To the south is R3. To the northwest is R2. And then that strip along Harland, including this house, is zoned commercially, although it's all utilized residentially since before the city was incorporated. Actually, interestingly enough, on the other side of Harland Street, there's actually a flower nursery that's zoned residentially. So there's a bit of a mismatch in this area between the actual land use and the zoning. This is an image from our comprehensive plan. The subject property is denoted by the star there. It is located in a neighborhood, and the proposed R1C zone district allows for small lot, single-family homes, so it is consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as the predominant land use in the area, which is mostly single-family homes despite the large area of R3. There is some multifamily there, but it's mostly single-family homes. There was a neighborhood meeting held on May 30, and there were six neighbors in attendance. Most of them attended out of curiosity and were concerned about what is... what was actually going on on the property. One staff said that there were only two houses maximum with a proposed zone change allowed on the property. That calmed a lot of the nerves, and folks were generally supportive of the rezoning at the neighborhood meeting. No one has contacted city staff during the public noticing period prior to this hearing. Referral utility agencies and other city departments responded with no comments or concerns during the referral period, and Planning Commission heard this case on July 10 and recommended approval. So staff has concluded that the request does meet the zone change criteria. A bit more extensive analysis is included in your staff report, but I'll quickly summarize. The proposed zoning is supported by the comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning is compatible with the predominant land use present in the area, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and this is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, council? I guess you did pretty well. I don't hear... See, have any questions? Stay close by, in case something else comes up. Do we need an applicant's testimony? I don't think we do unless we need to.
Is the applicant here, Zach? Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
They're here. I think they've signed up. Have they not, or not?
No, they're not. Well...
It might be.
I'm gonna call for public testimony, so that'll do it. Kathy Sorenson is one of two who have come here to discuss this.
That's me, and I'm...
She's the applicant.
Please come forward.
My name is Katie Sorenson. Do you need my address?
Speaker, into the microphone.
Do you need my address?
Yes, please.
5084 Gladiola Way, Golden, 80403.
Go ahead.
So Zach summarized our request really nicely, and I'm available to answer any questions. I don't have much to add other than what he presented.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
All right. If you want to just hang close. Larry Meyer? Oh, there he is.
I'm Larry Meyer, 6045 West 40th Avenue, right next door to the property. I don't have a whole lot to say except for I think putting a house in the back of that property would really crowd the whole area. Right now, that property is not maintained real well, and I just don't think the crowding and everything of putting another house back there would go well with the area. I'm almost finished.
I don't believe we have anyone else. I'm gonna close the public hearing. I need a motion. Mr. Urban?
One moment.
Madam Mayor, while you're getting ready for a motion, I should remind you, you're down to five council members, which is a quorum, so obviously, you're unable to act tonight. Ordinances require the affirmative vote to be passed by a majority of the entire council, says the charter, which means that you need five votes to pass an ordinance. This doesn't come up very often. Normally, all the council are here.
Right.
But on those times when there's fewer than the full council, I like to always make sure to remind you that for ordinances, you need passage of the entire... five votes.
You need a full five...
Yeah.
Five votes.
Five votes, yeah. It has come up occasionally where there's a four-four tie on an ordinance. Long ago, I answered that question, that if the mayor breaks the tie, that's five votes in favor of that ordinance if the mayor votes for it. If the mayor votes against, then of course, you're done. But tonight, for this to pass, it'll have to be unanimous. I'm not saying you have to vote for it, but I'm letting you know what the consequences are.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-1705, a request for approval of a zone change from commercial one to residential one C for property located at 6025 West 40th Avenue for the following reasons. The proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety, or welfare of the community and does not result in adverse effect on the surrounding area. Utility infrastructure adequately services the property. The proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan and consistent with the character of the surrounding area. The zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. Criteria used to evaluate a zone change supports the request.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald. Any discussion?
I guess just to address the neighbor's concern relative to the crowding of the lot. I don't know if Zach might be able to speak to that at all, if there was... The neighbor was concerned about the...
Sure. Sorry. So when we met with the applicant for the pre-application meeting before we started the zoning process, she did mention that she was interested in subdividing the property, so we made sure at that point in time that it would meet the requirements of the R1C zone district, and it does. Even split straight down the middle, it would meet the minimum width as well as the size requirements. And then, you know, eventually, if approved, and if the subdivision is approved and they come in for building permits, those would all need to comply with the R1C zone district standards, which includes the bulk plane that was mentioned earlier by a citizen.
So this particular approval is relative to just the zoning change, but not a subdivision of the lot?
Correct. Yep. The subdivision is just... would be a two-lot subdivision, so that's an administrative process.
And I guess my concern in that administrative review process is taking into consideration the neighborhood concerns relative to that... those concerns the neighbors have. What kind of protections do we have in place to take into account those neighborhood concerns? Do we have anything in that administrative process to make sure that those concerns are either voiced in that process, or will that be done administratively without any notice to the neighbors that that's being done? Or how will the neighbors know if that subdivision process is elected or chosen to be done?
The administrative subdivision process does not have a public noticing component to it, so they're more than welcome to call and ask how the process is going. But for an administrative subdivision just into two lots, there's no notice or public hearing requirement.
Okay. And then, as far as the... Is the applicant intending to subdivide the lot, or is that something... It's hard to say what someone's going to do with their private property, but...
Right. Yes. So she has submitted the first and middle of the subdivision that's being reviewed currently. She's done so at her own risk, understanding that if this doesn't pass tonight, we can't go anywhere with the subdivision. But so she is intending to subdivide the property, yes?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Maybe, Zach, could you respond to Mr. Urban's question, too, about the protections that are in place during administrative hearing process? There are certain restrictions, setbacks that are required?
Sure, yeah. So there are setbacks in the R1C zone district, off the top of my head. I believe it is five feet from the side, from the side property line, in addition to the bulk plane standard that was put into place, so straight up 15 feet and then over 45 degrees from all property lines. Front setback is 25 feet. Rear setback, I believe, is 10 in that zone district. So they would need to comply with all of those. We won't approve a building permit unless it complies with all of those.
Thank you, Zach. As I understand, the RC zoning does allow building... residential building on smaller lots, but we have some pretty good restrictions around that property, around that structure, including, of course, the bulk plane, which is so important.
Correct.
Yep.
So it's not feasible in this situation to see any... I don't want to put limitations in here, but it's not likely to see a multi-story, three-story or so. I guess it'd be hard to say without knowing the parameters involved, but with the bulk plane and the setback requirements, that's going to avoid the crowding issue that the neighbors had concerns about, would you say?
I believe so, yes. I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to what they have envisioned for the property.
Just reopen the hearing for the purpose of the...
Yeah. We had closed the hearing. We really should have had this discussion before I closed the hearing.
That's fine.
I'm gonna have to reopen the hearing. Please go ahead and answer the question.
I'm happy to speak to our plans for the property, and I think that the neighbors will be happy with what our vision is because at Shadow Homes, we're small-town developers, and we were born and raised here. We feel strongly about keeping the area of good value and good appearance and good function and form for our families. So our vision is consistent with those principles. To put our neighbors' concern hopefully a little bit at ease, if you can see where the property is outlined there in red, our subdivision application has asked to split that lot just on the left side of the garage, which is on the west portion of what you see from the satellite view is the structure. So it's gonna go five feet west of the garage. Okay? So it would leave the very same street frontage that's there presently in front of that single-family house as well as on the other side for the new proposed lot. And we are getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, I think, because tonight's issue is really on the zoning, but I'm certainly more than happy to share my vision for that area. And yes, it would be one single-family house. We have not gone as far as designing that house, but it certainly would be consistent with what's already there in the neighborhood. Definitely not three stories. I mean, I'm thinking like bungalow. Okay.
We have a question from council member Fitzgerald. You have a comment? Okay.
I just want to clarify. So you're saying the property to the west of the red line, right?
No, within the red line.
Right.
To the west of the garage there that you see from above.
But what you were... If I understood what you said is that the new lot that you're proposing is gonna be similar to the one right to the side?
Mm-hmm.
In size?
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
So if you look across the street, across 40th, for example, on this map, you can see that the street frontage in red is the very same as what's across the street to lots. Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay. So similar to that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments to the applicant? Then I'm gonna close the hearing again. We already have a motion, and a second. Did you want to add... Put something under discussion?
I do just want to add a comment. The existing zoning, which is C1, would allow a five-story building, I believe, so... and without the bulk plane regulations. So this is definitely an improvement to the neighbor's concern to change this to R1C.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fitzgerald. Can we go ahead and hold the council? I've closed it. Yep. Go ahead, cast your votes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Moving on to item number three. Councilmember Durant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution number 31-2017, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2017 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $120,000 for the purpose of replacing 30 pedestrian lights on 38th Avenue between Harland Street and Sheridan Boulevard. Issue: In May of 2017, the City of Wheat Ridge experienced an extremely damaging hailstorm that caused extensive losses to public and private property. The majority of the decorative pedestrian lights on 38th Avenue between Harland Street and Sheridan Boulevard were damaged. The lights were installed as part of 38th Avenue's streetscape project between Sheridan and Harland in 2002. Of the 72 lighting fixtures on this street segment, 42 were damaged beyond repair and are covered by the city's insurance carrier for replacement. The 30 remaining lights are still operable, but fixtures are not... are no longer manufactured or available.
Thank you. Our Public Works Director is with us. If there's any questions, or did you want to discuss it?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just make a few brief remarks here. You may recall back in August, on August 8, at the study session, we brought this in front of the council to inform you of the situation with the damaged streetlights and that our insurance carrier was covering those. The majority of those lights were damaged. We do have some remaining lights out there that are operable. The issue at hand was that the existing fixtures out there that were broken are no longer available. They're no longer manufactured, so we came to council at the study session to offer some options, one of which was to just replace all the city... all the lights out there with our standard decorative fixture. And for the sake of consistency, availability, long-term maintenance, cost efficiency, council elected to go forward with that. And we did need a supplemental budget amount of $120,000 to do that. We did reach out through the Urban Renewal Authority, and last week, they did approve appropriating that $120,000 we need to fill that gap. So if there are any questions, unless there are any questions, we recommend moving forward with that.
Thank you. Counsel? Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
I'm gonna start with Mr. Durant.
Thank you. We had discussed maybe finding some other areas in the city that we could use, the lights that are still operable. How is that looking?
We haven't yet. We've made some inquiries here. We haven't been able to find a suitable location or any... Nobody's come forward and said they have a need for those yet, but we do plan on stockpiling those. If the need should come along, we'll have those. If not, we would put them out on the city's auction.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Urban?
What is the reasoning behind seeking the funding from the Urban Renewal Authority?
What is the reasoning behind seeking the funding from the Urban Renewal Authority?
That was a request by city council to do that, I believe. And the Urban Renewal Authority has funds that are generated from a previous TIF agreement for the Wheat Ridge Recycler Project. And they are still collecting those funds, and those dollars have to be used for projects on 38th Avenue specifically. And so Steve Art took that to the Urban Renewal Authority Board meeting, and they agreed that they thought that was an appropriate expense to use those dollars for.
Okay. And then how do these lights, do they in any way adhere or help us get to any kind of dark skies standard with respect to limiting their upward focus? Or do they limit our exposure to the night sky in any way?
Yeah, these are standard LED fixtures, which unlike the fixtures that are out there now, the light on those can be directed more toward the ground and the area in front of them rather than all over the place like the existing ones.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe we're ready for a motion? I didn't know we have any public, no? Thank you. We're ready for a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 31-2017, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2017 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $120,000 for the purpose of replacing 30 pedestrian lights on 38th Avenue between Harland Street and 38th Avenue. Second?
Seconded by Ms. Hoppy. Please cast your votes. If there's no discussion, it looks like that's true.
Motion carries five to zero.
Ms. Hoppy, would you read item number four?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution Number 32-2017, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and the City and County of Denver concerning additional construction costs for extending Denver Water Department conduit work in the amount not to exceed
Do you want to read the issue?
I'll let staff has a report on it.
Hey, we do have staff here. Scott Brink is going to give a quick presentation on it, and...
Can we go ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we also have Tyler Carlson with Evergreen Development, who is working with us on the Clear Creek Crossing project. If you have any questions for him.
Great. Did you understand that? Okay, good.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You may recall back in May, we came to city council to get an IGA approved with Denver Water to do the engineering design for moving the tunneling, the bore pit location for Denver Water's 84-inch diameter water main that they are installing. It's a replacement pipe that runs from the Ralston Reservoir all the way down to the Moffett Treatment Plant. And Denver Water did come in later, I believe, at a study session and gave a presentation on that. The reason for this was, in conjunction with the Clear Creek Crossing site development and the hook ramp construction off of I-70 into the site, the hook ramps themselves and the location of this tunneling or bore pit for Denver Water were located in the same location, which by itself wouldn't really be an issue, except that timing-wise with Denver Water's construction and the timing of the development and of the hook ramp construction, these things basically can't go along, be under construction at the same time. So we approved the IGA with Denver Water. They had their engineer go back and redesign the tunneling, not just the bore pit location, but it affects the whole tunneling operation itself. So they moved the bore pit back about 150 feet. And what happens with that is the grade drops off significantly, so it does change the location of the pipes, some both the vertical and the horizontal alignment. A big chunk of this cost that we see, at least half of it according to the estimate, is for de-watering, because they're going down much lower, they're getting into the groundwater now. So they threw in quite a bit of money for de-watering, very conservatively in our minds. So the payment for this extension would be based on time material only. We would only pay for the cost that's needed for the de-watering and anything else in the construction. So we're optimistic that this price is a bit high and that it will come in lower. But I believe it was mentioned the 2E dollars are available to fund this as well. So we're recommending council to approve this IGA with Denver Water so that we can allow the work to proceed and keep both projects, Denver Water's and Clear Creek Crossing, on schedule and on time here.
Thank you, Scott. Questions of Scott or the developer? What a surprise, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just full of questions tonight, I guess. I'm just want to make sure we're doing this right. And I appreciate the desire to be optimistic in this regard. I just, I'm curious as to the situation in which things are not, don't turn out optimistic. And I understand that there's a clause in here that indicates that an additional agreement will be reached if additional costs are incurred, or what happens when the time of materials exceed this cost? What will happen in that situation?
No, that's a good question, Mr. Urban. And as you know, we have a $10 million budget that was approved as part of the 2E funds for the construction of the hook ramps. That estimate for the construction, the actual construction of the hook ramps has come in lower than that, thankfully, below 9.5 million, I believe. So adding this on, this additional work will keep it at the 10, around the $10 million level. However, if there are costs that exceed that amount, that, those costs would have to be wrapped into the financial agreement for the entire project and would have to be part of the pro forma for the project. And the developer and I have talked about that, and those additional costs would be paid through future sales tax or property tax from this project, as they're going to be asking for assistance in addition to the stent milling for the hook ramps, probably for the rest of the site to do the other improvements.
I guess my next question is relative to the 2E dollars and knowing that those are for the construction of the hook ramps, and these, this contract is relative to the tunneling work, and I see how those two are connected, but what is the legal justification for connecting those two projects?
I'm not an attorney. Do you want to talk, it's a legal question, Mr. Dolph?
If you'd said, "What's the financial reason for connecting those two?", then...
I get the financial reason.
Then I would have been, the 2E language, you're governed by the 2E language, and that language says approximately in that ballot question. And it says approximately, and that, in my opinion, gives the council some room to adjust as between, within those categories. If it had said exactly, you know, more than X dollars and for that purpose only, then you'd be stuck just with those specific numbers in 2E. When as and if it comes to the point where there's more money than that allocated, that is needed, then it's going to be, first, a judgment for the council to determine if it wants to spend that additional money and move it from another category. But in my opinion, the council's flexibility to be able to do that is pretty limited, because again, the ballot question is what guides you and limits you. And when it says approximately, that's what it means. And if you add, I think you would look at it from a percentage standpoint. You know, if you're changing it by five or 10%, that's getting away from approximately. If you're changing it by a percent or two, and again, ultimately, it's your decision to make, but you're limited by the understanding of the voters when the word approximately is used. I'm taking too long to say, you're not stuck with just the number, because you've got approximately. So there's a little bit of room, and depending upon what's required, that will be brought to you, and you can determine with my voice and others whether you're still within the amount of adjustment language or adjustment room that I think the ballot question fairly gives you.
So I guess, at one point, does this project become that project? And that this project is related to the tunneling project? These dollars are related to the tunneling project? How does that connect to the building of the hook ramps?
I could maybe speak to that a little bit. Maybe Tyler wants to interject, if that's okay with Mr. Urban. But, you know, we've discussed this, and in our mind, the hook ramp project won't happen in a timely fashion, and maybe, you know, it can always happen, I guess, down the road, but it may not happen and then initiate the Clear Creek Crossing project unless they get done in an appropriate amount of time. If the bore pit is not moved, and, you know, Denver Water does have a schedule to get the tunneling done by a certain time, I believe it's at the end of next summer, at the end of the summer next year or fall, that's their schedule. But if they run into an issue that delays that a year, that delays this project a year, that delays the construction of the hook ramps a year. We have a three-year window to use those funds to build the hook ramps, and, you know, one of the primary reasons we asked the voters for the additional sales tax for these projects was to encourage redevelopment projects and economic development projects. If the hook ramps don't get built in a timely manner, this project may not happen.
For sure.
So that's how we...
Do we have an investment in that project already?
Yeah. Well, yeah, we have, yeah. And I don't know if Mr. Carlson has anything to add to that, or if you'd like him, if...
Sure.
Tyler, do you want to introduce yourself and come forward?
Well, it's coming up. I had thought your question was about the additional money for de-watering, and so, yeah, approximately gives you some loose change for that. But if your question was how is hook ramp money, or how is tunneling money, or expenses for tunneling, appropriate for a hook ramp project? That's Patrick's answer, and I agree with that. You do, if you need to get Denver out of the way so you can do your hook ramp project, and you need to spend money to get Denver out of your way, then that cost becomes a part of your hook ramp project cost, because you're eliminating delay so you can get that project done. And I think that I'm comfortable saying that, yeah, eliminating delay on the hook ramp project is a hook ramp cost. The fact that it has to do with Denver's tunneling is, while interesting, it doesn't change the fact that it's a hook ramp cost, because you're getting people out of the way so you can do the hook ramp project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that anything like right away? In a way? In a way, right away? Okay. Let's have, Mr. Carlson?
I'm Carlson, Evergreen Development, in Haddar.
Sure.
1873 South Bellerard Street, Suite 1200. Suite 1200, Denver, Colorado. And just to add quickly, the reason why this, the timing is important is the bore pit is, of course, in the first phase of a four-phase highway construction project. It's going to take us a year to build the hook ramps. If it was in a different phase, we could kind of overlap the sequencing of the two, but because we literally can't even start the hook ramps until the bore pit is either relocated or done, that's our challenge. And as I think everyone here knows, Denver Water's been working on this project for years. With all due respect to DW, they don't have a great track record for scheduled maintenance. And there's a lot of unknowns. When you start boring underneath the highway, I mean, you really don't know what you're going to get. And so our concern was that they start the bore pit, you know, later this year, and all of a sudden, you know, nine to 12-month schedule for Denver Water becomes a 12 to 24-month schedule, and the city infrastructure project's on hold, the overall, you know, the overall development's on hold. And that is why we believe this is basically a good insurance policy that we can fit within our current budgets, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions while we... Ms. Wooden?
Mr. Brink, what was the size of the tunnel? Wasn't it 80, how many inches?
Yeah, the pipe itself is 84 inches in diameter, and so the tunneling, there's a casing that the pipe goes through, so the casing's even a little bigger than 84-inch, so it's fairly good size.
So I remember from the presentation that was given a few weeks ago by Denver Water that this is a huge project as part of a multi-step project that they're doing to replace this main water line. And boring an 84, you know, that size of a pipe underneath the highway is a huge project, and I can certainly see where this cost is going to come into that. My comment on this is going to be, you know, as Wheat Ridge, how about we step up? We get this project going. Let's not delay it anymore. We have tried to get Clear Creek Crossing going for years. Is it over a decade? Over a decade. So here we are with the developer, anxious to get going. We have voters that approved 2E to get the project going, and let's put some skin in the game. Let's get the project going. Let's not stall anymore. Let's get the project going. It will benefit our city in numerous ways, and it's what we say we want to do. That's why that property is out there. Develop it to serve our citizens. So let's stop any kind of further stalling.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Hoppy?
I believe in Patrick. Correct me if I'm wrong, but in order for this property to be developed, we were told that we had to do two things. One of them was relative to Highway 58, and one of them was CDOT said you need hook ramps. Then we went back and said, what if we only develop this many square feet of this property? They said, okay, you can do that if you get us the hook ramps. So without the hook ramps, we can't even develop this property. Is that correct?
Correct. CDOT and Federal Highway Administration did approve a Phase 1 reevaluation that said we could essentially build a certain amount, a very small amount, with the current improvements that have been done out there, the 40th Underpass, and then the improvements that we did to 32nd and Youngfield. But yes, correct, anything above that amount, which I think was like maybe around 300,000 square feet of development, cannot be built until the hook ramps are done.
So then we went to our, like Ms. Wooden said, then we went to our voters. We got approved for the 2E, and thankfully, our community has given us the money to do this. And so I'm glad that we're in a position where we are able to use the money that our community has given us through 2E to be able to keep this going. So thanks again to our citizens for that.
There's no further, can we have a motion from the council? Ms. Hoppy?
That's me.
I move to approve Resolution Number 32-2017, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and the City and County of Denver concerning additional construction costs for extending Denver Water Department conduit work in the amount of not to exceed $557,335.63.
Second?
Seconded by Ms. Durant. Further discussion? Cast your votes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five. I didn't write down who's right, who's doing that one? Oh, Ms. Davis. She's not here. Yeah. Ms. Wooden, would you introduce number five?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a motion to ratify the mayoral appointment of Kevin Hood to the vacant District 4 seat on the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, DBA Renewal Wheat Ridge, term to expire November 30, 2021. At issue, after Kelly Brooks' resignation, his vacancy was advertised in the Wheat Ridge Transcript, Channel 8, city website, and through other printed and electronic media types. Three citizens have applied for the vacant District 4 seat on the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, DBA Renewal Wheat Ridge, term to expire November 30, 2021. After speaking with all of the applicants, Mayor Jay has appointed Kevin Hood to the seat.
Let me also say that there were a total of five applicants, two of which did not turn in a written application, Tracy Langworthy and John Clark. And John believed that he had done it a year earlier. We contacted him, but he did not send us another one. I'm very pleased to nominate Kevin Hood. I think he will be a wonderful asset to our city. Very interested in urban renewal and has already attended a meeting, just to kind of listen and see what's going on.
Is the motion in order?
Yes.
I move to ratify the mayoral appointment of Kevin Hood to District 4 of the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, DBA Renewal Wheat Ridge, term to expire November 30, 2021.
Second?
Cast your votes, please.
Oh, that would be good, wouldn't it? There you go. Motion carries three to two, with Councilmembers Urban and Durant voting no.
Madam Mayor, we have a code requirement that says that each appointment to the Urban Renewal Authority shall be made by the mayor, subject to approval by majority vote of the entire city council. Entire city council's eight, majority, that's five. That's what the code says.
So...
And you've got three. So that appointment isn't effective. And you've got three. So that appointment isn't effective unless someone wants to, on the prevailing side, wants to reconsider or move to reconsider. But you need five votes to approve a mayoral appointment. That's what the code says.
Okay. So if there was only one District Four person to apply, how does that fit in?
That's just sort of eligibility to apply, but then the appointments made by the mayor are subject to approval by the council. So whether you had one person applying or, I understand if, gee, if there's only one, shouldn't that one be confirmed? But the code doesn't really account for that. The code says there's a mayoral appointment and those appointments have to be ratified by a majority vote of the council. So whether that appointment was based upon a one eligible person or five eligible people, it's still the ratification step that you're at now that requires five votes.
So at what point, at what next step should we take now? Is there a vote to be delayed?
You've got a couple of choices. One would be a member on the prevailing side, right this meeting, can move to reconsider, understanding that, gee, maybe this is the only way to go. You move to reconsider that motion, if that motion passes, then you can revote, you've done a reconsideration before. You could move to reconsider at your next business meeting, your council rules allow you to reconsider at this meeting or the next regular meeting. If neither of those two things happen, then what you have is an appointment that has not been ratified. The position remains vacant, the mayor's power to continue to fill that vacancy remains and she can appoint someone else and that someone else can come back to the, that appointment can come to the council for its consideration. Those are the three choices that you have.
I will move to reconsider at the next business meeting.
Did you vote on the prevailing side?
Yes.
No, it would be a no vote.
Yeah, the prevailing side here were the no votes because the no votes prevailed in preventing the motion from passing. So it would have to be either Councilmember Urban or Councilmember Duran making that motion. I'm sorry?
Madam Mayor, is Kevin Hood here?
Mr. Hood, actually, I spoke to him today and he would have loved to attend to this, but he had, he couldn't attend tonight.
Okay.
I don't believe any of the candidates are here.
Okay, but he isn't here this evening to address us. Okay, so I would like to move to, um-
If you want to move to reconsider the-
Or to-
The ratification of, if you, that motion has to be seconded, can be seconded by anyone. If that motion passes by a majority, then the question of the ratification of the appointment of, is it Kevin Hood?
Yes.
Is in front of you again and you vote on that and you can see if upon reconsideration you, so it's two votes, one to reconsider-
One to reconsider.
And then you get, basically that's the time machine, you go back in time to just before the vote was taken and then you vote again on the ratification.
Or, wait, I'm not done that quite. Or we can move to bring this back to the next meeting and maybe Kevin Hood could be here, so we could at least meet him and kind of hear from him as to why he wants to serve on urban renewal?
Yes, if you're doing that, and that actually, thank you, has been done a number of times where-
Okay.
The prevailing member will move to reconsider and schedule that reconsideration at the next meeting so that there can be some thought. So a proper motion would be move to reconsider the vote on the ratification of the mayor's appointment of Kevin Hood, scheduled to be on the-
September twenty-fifth.
September twenty-fifth.
Okay.
If that's your motion.
So I'd like to make that motion.
You're moving-
Second.
A second. I'd like to ask a question though.
I-
Before the second?
No, the second went, I'd like to ask a question.
Oh, you seconded it. All right.
Can you second that? Anyone can second a motion to reconsider, yeah.
What was the question? The majority, does the majority of who is here or is it majority as in we need five votes tonight?
Tonight you'll need five votes because you do. The language of the code is just like actually the one we had before, which is a majority of, quote, "the entire council."
Okay.
So that's just numbers. So if it comes up in, if it comes up two weeks from now, it's a majority, the entire council then, and if the absent members are present, they are fully able to vote. It's not a quas-trudicial matter, it doesn't have to do with the hearing. So everybody can vote.
Okay, so Ms. Duran has made a motion to, for it to come to our next business meeting-
That's correct.
And it has to pass by five.
That's correct.
And we will make an effort to have Kevin Hood, or you will reach out to have him here.
Madam Mayor, as you mentioned, that another applicant had indicated that he had previously applied, maybe between now and then we can find his previously submitted application as well.
And I contacted him twice and I, we, I had the const-, excuse me, the deputy clerk send another application out, twice.
But did he not already submit, I think what you indicated was he'd already submitted one.
He had submitted it a year earlier and he therefore didn't feel like he had to do it again. So I immediately had the deputy clerk send him a new one and Mr. Clark said he would check into that and-
But we don't-
See if that is necessary.
But we don't have his previous application, though?
Apparently not. I have his hand up here.
I believe they just keep him for a year on file, is my understanding?
Okay, thank you.
Which in some ways probably should be there, depending on when-
I guess that was my question, is if it was, then we should have it. If we don't, then why don't we have it?
You've still got a hand up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would hope that we would not then, since the deadline has passed, ask other people to apply for this position. There was, I remember very specifically some appointments and some people who applied after appointments and we upheld that it was after the deadline and so that those people were not available to be considered for that position and I would like to continue to do that.
That the position is really not, we're not re-advertising it.
Correct.
We want to settle it among-
Procedurely, what will be in front of you next week is consideration of the mayor's, ratification of the mayor's appointment of Kevin Hood, not, okay, let's talk to, I mean, that's procedurally what will be in front of you.
Understand.
Fair enough.
Yep, I understand.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I was going to say the same thing. We have to remember that this is the mayor's appointment, not the council's appointment.
By law.
Yep. Yes, I understand that clearly. Thank you.
Have we settled that one?
Are you ready to vote on that motion?
It's a motion for reconsider.
To reconsider? You don't need to refer to this anymore?
I don't need to refer to that, thank you.
Okay.
Wait, we, I guess the question to the state attorney is, do we need to vote on a reconsideration to reconsider it?
Yeah.
She's just made that to-
Well, it's a two-step process. It's a, first you move, a member of the prevailing side moves to reconsider. If that passes, then the next question is, you've reconsidered your earlier decision, you haven't reversed it, you've reconsidered it, meaning that you want to vote again on the main motion.
They didn't vote on the reconsideration.
On the original motion.
They didn't vote on the reconsider-
No, they haven't voted on her motion.
They haven't voted on my motion.
We don't know if we're reconsidering next week until-
I call for the question. So this question is to whether or not to have that vote next week?
Exactly right, yeah. This does not immediately appoint the guy, no.
Just want to make sure.
On the twenty-fifth.
On the twenty-fifth of September.
Does everyone understand? Okay.
Yes.
Please cast your votes.
Motion carries five, five to zero.
Thank you, and we will get in touch with Mr. Hood. All right, our business meeting is over. Do we want to move right into the-
We can, study session?
Why don't we do that instead of all the other stuff and we'll do that?
Sure.
We're going to move into study session.
We're going to go to study session. Business meeting's over.
All right. Now you're doing it different. Are you going to reconvene us and do the-
We're going to wait till after this, because people have been waiting all this time.
With elective officials matters and all of that.
We'll do that.
We'll just reconvene the regular meeting for that purpose.
Introduce you. First of all, I have looked over this initial report. We, I am very, very proud that your group has done a tremendous job and I wish we had a full council tonight, but, and some of those members who are missing, I know we particularly appreciate the kind of work you've done. So go ahead, give it to us.
Good evening. Make sure you can hear me all right. We're pleased to be here to present to you. So first of all, thank you for this opportunity. We're thankful for a city council and your support for sustainability initiatives and for the development of the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Council.
What is your name?
My name is Amy D. Pierre and my co-presenter is Joy Offe and we were named last week the co-chairs for the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Council. So we are essentially representatives for the people that you see in the front two rows here, eleven of us total, some who are not here this evening. And essentially, we are going to be sharing with you the research, the information that's been gathered and compiled during our first few months in existence, essentially. Before we dive in, I wanted to take a moment to pause. We have a couple of things to express as far as gratitude. The first one goes to Cindy Kraft, who has been an incredible facilitator, motivator and organizer for our first few meetings. So thank you, council, for putting her in place for us. She's been fabulous. And we'll carry your spirit forward as we self-organize, so thank you for that. And then secondly, we also wanted to acknowledge both Matt Anderson and Carly Lawrence with the city. They've been critical for our success thus far and will be integral for everything moving forward as well. All right, to provide a brief background, I think probably most of you know what we are, but we are a volunteer citizen committee and we've been chosen for our expertise and our experience and essentially tasked to serve as ambassadors for the environmental concerns of the community. Our prescribed mission from the city is to evaluate the current policy and practices of sustainability in Wheat Ridge, as well as to provide support, advice and guidance for the mayor and the council around those issues. We are also going to be involving the community at large through engagement and outreach around these issues and then also identifying metrics so that we are able to track our progress on how far we move the needle on sustainability. And then finally, our large task at hand will be to help develop as well as implement an action plan by May of two thousand and eighteen. To start, we have six topic areas that we will focus on: green building and energy efficiency, renewable energy, transportation, water and communication and engagement. Did I get them all? Oh, I should probably say it. And before we proceed, I wanted just to make a quick note. There are many various definitions of sustainability and so I just wanted to, for our purpose here this evening, just to kind of share that we are simply going to be defining it as the responsible use of resources to benefit each of the three rungs of sustainability, which are recognized as social, economic and environmental, or people, profit and planet. And then, so we all have that same definition that we're working from. In order to work toward our mission, over the past few months, the committee has conducted a comprehensive research of existing plans within Wheat Ridge and surrounding communities. We've also hosted a wide variety of interviews of community members, including city government officials, local business leaders and various community organizations. We use Wheat Ridge's current sustainability policy and plan as our guide and it was quickly apparent that there is already a strong foundation of sustainability in place within Wheat Ridge in both city and community. Our interviews provide an opportunity to deepen our understanding of the current landscape of sustainability within our community as well as our nearby neighbors. For each of the six topic areas I just shared with you, throughout this presentation, we will share the social, economic and environmental importance for each one, what's currently happening in Wheat Ridge around them, as well as in some cases beyond, and that what we have identified as the strengths, the needs and the challenges for and within our community, and then what we believe to be the necessary next steps for our committee. One note, I did mention that part of our mission includes metrics and as we move through the presentation, you'll notice for each topic area that there is a wide variation regarding what is and is not available in the way of metrics for each piece. The presentation is going to be about thirty minutes and we'll have time for questions following. The first topic that we are going to discuss is green building and efficiency, energy efficiency. Energy efficiency was originally grouped in with renewable energy and due to this close connection with green building, we did move it here, just because it seemed a very natural fit as we started conducting our research. Buildings are obviously very important to our society. We spend approximately ninety percent of our time indoors and making buildings more efficient will provide opportunities to save energy and money for home and business owners throughout Wheat Ridge while improving the built environment that we live and work in. So why, why green building? Green building or sustainable design is the practice of increasing the efficiency of how buildings and their sites, to report to note, use energy, water and materials to reduce impacts on health and environment, which ultimately leads to an improved quality of life for all. Buildings currently consume more than forty percent, or nearly half of all energy that is consumed in Wheat Ridge. Developing and funding responsible building programs will result in energy, water and monetary savings, decreased environmental degradation and an increase of the health, wellness, comfort and safety for residents and building occupants. In essence of time, I know we're already taking thirty minutes, but there are so many statistics on this as well as all of the different topic areas that we simply won't have the time to discuss today. So first, we must say that the impressive accomplishments led by the volunteer sustainability team of the city employees that are outlined in the current sustainability policy and plan were updated July of this year. The city has already made a great start by completing energy audits for some of its buildings, adopting two thousand and twelve building energy codes and implementing energy conservation measures. Highlights from the current plan include energy audits, as I said, such as at the Active Adult Center and the Recreation Center. There's also the installation of more efficient lighting, City Hall, Active Adult Center, the Recreation Center, Anderson Building, as well as Parks Forestry and Open Space Buildings, and then the installation of LED lighting and all traffic lights, city holiday lights and on city-owned and maintained pedestrian lights in several key locations that are all noted in the plan. So as for metrics, we are still working to establish, understand the baseline for this category. At this point, the city has just really started to realize the potential savings and through updating building codes and following through with recommendations already in place, the city will continue to save resources. As previously stated, the work of the volunteer city employees is impressive and shows their commitment to energy savings. However, the lack of time, staff time and funding are barriers to achieving the plans- goals. Moving forward, our committee will continue to research what is happening around green building and sustainable design within similar communities for consideration and adaptation to the unique landscape and character of Wheat Ridge. In addition, we intend to investigate homeowner and business incentive programs and look into updated building codes. These are exciting times in the world of green building and energy efficiency, and Wheat Ridge has only begun to explore its options. We should strive to create healthy and efficient spaces for all our residents, which improves quality of life and enhances productivity while reducing costs and impacts on our local Moving on to renewable energy, I have to note that this has been a hotly debated topic amongst our group. So, renewable energy itself refers to energy sources that are not depleted when used, unlike fossil fuels, which are non-renewable and have a limited availability. Renewable energy would benefit Wheat Ridge city and citizens by stabilizing energy cost supply, providing consumers with clean energy choices that would decrease polluting emissions, and also create higher-paying jobs. Currently, the city of Wheat Ridge has invested in renewable energy through Excel's solar garden program, and a small but increasing number of residents participate in Excel's wind and solar programs. Wheat Ridge has enormous potential to harness renewable energy to alter its energy supply mix. We are very fortunate to live in a place with conditions that are perfect for many renewable energy options, most notably of which are wind and solar. In regards to metrics, we are reliant on Excel to provide these for Wheat Ridge. As you can see here, are a few things. I'm interested, the committee is actually an Excel energy program called WindSource. This program allows customers to pay a little extra every month to get some or all of their energy from renewable resources. As one of the nation's largest voluntary renewable energy programs, WindSource is an easy, inexpensive way to make a difference. It's actually less than the cost of a bag of chicken feed. According to Excel's website, it's about twelve dollars a month. To date, our talks with local leaders have pointed to the large number, oop, all right. So, our talks with local leaders have pointed to the large number of programs available to use renewable energy at the home, business, and community scale. Wheat Ridge can empower a shift to renewables with the support and example of city government, coupled with an increased awareness of residents regarding renewable options available to them. Other cities are taking strong action toward increasing renewables. As some of you may know, Denver has recently committed to one hundred percent renewable energy by 2040. However, I think there's always a however. However, there are, there's still a lot of work to be done. We're encouraged that our local partners are engaged and looking for ways to reduce pollution in our air and water, and education and community engagement are considered to be a high priority next step for this area. Transportation. Transportation is simply the movement of goods and people, whether they're residents or visitors, from point A to point B, and then C, and D, and E, and so forth. By providing multiple varied forms of transportation for Wheat Ridge residents and its visitors, we would bring about a host of social, environmental, and economic benefits. These include improved transportation access for the forty percent, say again, forty percent of residents that do not drive at all. And then also improve public health through increased physical activity opportunities, increase local business access by improved connectivity for all residents, and reduce air pollution from the reduction of single-occupant vehicle trips necessary. Wheat Ridge has historically worked hard and continues to give attention to the ongoing improvement of multimodal transportation options for residents and visitors. Efforts to date include completing planning processes for bicycling and pedestrian improvements, pursuing transit-oriented development, or TODs, and installing new bicycle infrastructure. Wheat Ridge's primary challenge is to improve transportation options: the safety, affordability, and accessibility for all residents in the context of a predominantly established infrastructure system. Say again. The predominantly established infrastructure system, essentially a euphemism for a car-centric society that we currently reside in. The existing strengths in Wheat Ridge, which include the bus and light rail connectivity, TOD and mixed-use development opportunities, and community engagement and efforts in place that aim to enhance existing active transportation. However, additional community support and resources are needed to build upon existing There are a number of exciting possible next steps the city can pursue to further advance multimodal transportation systems. These steps include improving municipal fleet efficiency, which would serve to reduce emissions and save money on fuel, continued implementation of bike and pedestrian plans to improve connectivity between residents and local businesses and destinations, the support and pursuit of mixed-use development projects that reduce the need for single-occupancy vehicle trips, and potentially, maybe even an alternative fuel car show, or vehicle car show, maybe at the Wheat Ridge Bowl? I don't know. These steps would reinforce existing efforts while also maintaining the character of Wheat Ridge. As a community, we will need to make the most of coming light rail line and the already existing excellent bus routes. The Denver metro's struggle with traffic has a clear and affordable solution, and that is to continue expansion of transit and active transportation opportunities, or options. This is where I turn to my co-chair, Joy, to present on the remaining topic areas and close out our presentation today. Thank you for your time.
All right. I'm going to move on to the next topic and start talking trash. So, for most people, a rising awareness of waste and recycling has led to changing habits in their homes, out in local events, and in their workplaces. Our community has really come to expect the city's support. Waste reduction and recycling goals are often attainable at a relatively low cost and offer opportunities for quick returns and even revenue generation. Our review of solid waste and recycling efforts here in Wheat Ridge includes consideration for the city government, businesses, and residences. The social, economic, and environmental benefits from waste management have tangible advantages, and they're immediately felt in our general well-being. So, in other words, trash affects all of us. The city has taken initial steps to incorporate sustainable waste practices by adding some recycling bins in city parks and increasing the use of digital documents in city operations. There are some notable efforts on the community scale which support residences and businesses, including cleanup days, local restaurants engaging in food-waste diversion programs, and some neighbors aligning to select a single trash provider. I know that's kind of a touchy subject. We'll get to that later. While the committee did not gather existing metrics, we do see value in identifying some baseline measures on the impact to the city from the current dispersed trash collection approach. The city has some excellent waste management processes in place, which lay the groundwork for further expansion of recycling, compost, and trash management. Efforts to engage in waste management currently, oh my gosh, I completely have forgotten to scroll. Thank you, my dear. The city's effort to engage in waste management currently and in the past is valuable, as this committee identifies strategies to support sustainable practices. Additionally, there's a lot to learn from what Denver is doing, for example, and also what other outlying communities have succeeded in and failed in. While the city has started some programs, there is not information collected by the city to create a baseline. There's a lack of unified agreement among city residents regarding trash collection, but there seems to be a growing enthusiasm for composting and recycling efforts. A few suggestions here on this slide, and this committee will work to further develop proposals to support the city and community efforts at waste management. A first step, for example, is placing recycle receptacles next to every city-provided trash receptacle, and we specifically would like to address the challenge of providing recycle bins at local events. Simple education efforts can lead to behavioral changes, and we feel this trend is gaining momentum. We will begin by calculating the returns on a small investment in education efforts, as well as improved programs around waste management. Next category is water. Water is defined broadly by both the supply of drinking water and disposal of wastewater and stormwater. We consider this an important element to promoting a more sustainable Wheat Ridge, and we include both the capacity of existing systems to supply and remove water, as well as the quality of supplied and disposed of water. Maintaining and enhancing existing built and natural water systems promotes the social, economic, and environmental livability of Wheat Ridge. The benefits to the human and environmental health, the reduction of flood impact, and associated costs are all considerations for embracing water sustainability. Currently, the city and utilities have adopted policy or encourage voluntary strategies to address water quality and quantity. This includes conservation from appliances, fixtures, and landscaping, as well as education efforts. There's an increasing trend toward water conservation, and that we feel that that should be embraced through incentives, as well as policy. Regarding metrics for measuring water quality and usage, baseline numbers are needed and are not currently being compiled. Water usage numbers are available to individual users, but they are not compiled by the city. Water conservation efforts exist and are supported by the city, the community, service providers, and the state. The city's stormwater enforcement efforts protect water quality. A genuine challenge is that water supply and quality is perceived as secure in Wheat Ridge. Conservation, supply, and quality are beyond the Wheat Ridge jurisdiction, and the city should focus efforts on education and community engagement to enforce the idea that water systems are connected to underlying natural water supplies. Wheat Ridge has made strides in promoting conservation efforts, which is reflected in city plans, including strong enforcement of stormwater code. Next steps to address water supply quality, stormwater, and wastewater include education and behavioral change. This will require outreach and policy investigation. Overall, there are substantial existing programs and approaches that can be applied within a Wheat Ridge-specific context for very low cost to the city and minimal resource investment. This committee would like to investigate the potential for local incentives for green infrastructure and water conservation, and potential funding sources for stormwater management. And other ideas are listed here on this slide. The final category that we addressed is communication and local community engagement. We defined communication and engagement as the effort to establish consistent outreach, advocacy, and stewardship for the community around all five topic areas assigned by this committee. We see an opportunity to unify the city around objectives beneficial to all its residents. There are low-cost and low-resource ways to create communication tools which support all of this committee's initiatives. Communication with the community and educational opportunities provide the foundation for generating support for our efforts. We're extremely fortunate to live in a community with a high level of citizen engagement through social media and local event attendance. We also have access to various city plans and an excellent volunteer website. As the committee moves forward, we plan to look at local and outlying communities and organizations for samples of their publications and community engagement activities. Additionally, there are terrific publications already being distributed here in Wheat Ridge that we can tap into for further education and engagement of the community. Those are minimal and low cost to the city. Metrics used include tracking volunteer position, distribution numbers from our local publications, easily-measured engagement on social media, and attendance here at City Hall meetings. We consider one of the greatest strengths of this community is the level of citizen engagement. Because Wheat Ridge is a small community, we can easily engage citizens, as is demonstrated through our local event attendance, as well as the accessibility of our government officials. This committee sees very few challenges in our ability to educate and engage our community. We simply need more focused programs and incentives, as well as attainable goals. With effective communication efforts, many of the goals that this committee will set over the coming year in each of the five topic areas can be achieved. One initial first step recommended by this committee is the consideration of the adoption of Sustainable Neighborhood Program with the adaptations for the uniqueness of Wheat Ridge. We would also request a regular update to the city website to include a more directed approach to the local sustainability efforts and specific actions that this committee is taking. A recognition program for civic sustainability efforts would increase citizen engagement and provide a fun and positive way for the city to reward the efforts taking place in the community. Well, that concludes our formal presentation portion, and I just want to thank council and Mayor Jay for the opportunity to present our initial work. This committee holds an inspiring amount of knowledge, expertise, and enthusiasm, and we look forward to our ultimate goal of creating a viable and exciting plan. After that, we're eager to work with the city to realize a sustainable Wheat Ridge that future generations will cherish. At this time, we'll take questions, and a committee member that feels like they're an expert in the area would be happy to answer. Thank you.
They don't clap for everybody, so, you know, I really, really appreciate your approach, which was responsible use of resources. Anybody can embrace that readily, and I really appreciate it. Council, you must have some questions. Mr. Ann?
I probably have a little bit more comments than questions. First off, thank all of you so much for putting in your time and your energy and your dedication to putting this together. I'm really excited about this. One of the things I wanted to ask if, in your discussions over the next several months, is maybe kind of like an incentive or point system for developers that might be coming into the city, kind of a guideline of criteria, you know, for them to meet as they're building, just something to kind of talk about as we're going down the road. Also, when you're talking about transportation, maybe, I know up in Golden, they have a Zip Car for citizens to use to get from point A to point B, so, you know, they're not, kind of cutting down on those fossil fuels. So, that would be great. I'm just really excited about this. So, in the next steps, are you going to be kind of looking at a budget during this process for the city, for us to kind of look and see, you know, what are we going to need to do to keep this sustainable and moving forward past, not just the year, but in the future?
Right. So, up until now, Sundry has been our fearless leader, and Amy and I have just now taken over this past week. So, our next meeting, we will be setting basically an agenda for the next eight months and setting our own personal goals for what we hope to accomplish and present to you. So, I love your ideas, and possibly what we could look into is a regular communication between council and this committee, so that when we come up with next steps, we can make another presentation and hear your feedback, because we're here for you, and we're here to get a hundred percent buy-in. So, obviously, we're interested in hearing your feedback and getting your ideas.
No, that would be great, because whatever, you know, I can do to help, or reach out, or communicate with our citizens, because we need that support from our community also. So, whatever, you know, I can do or we can do on that point, please let us know. So, thank all of you again. I appreciate it.
Thank you for that nice backup. It's Hoppy.
Oh, thank you for all of your volunteer time and effort that you have put into this, and I really appreciate it. I have a few questions. One of them is, I was surprised to see that forty percent of Wheat Ridge does not drive So, that's almost fifty percent. How does that compare to other communities?
I don't know how that compares to other communities, and that is all of our entire population, right? That's not just driving age. But then, so that includes children and seniors, but they're a key demographic, or two key demographics that do need to get from place to place, so that's what that number is. or two key demographics that do need to get from place to place, so that number is inclusive of all those folks.
Great, thank you. And then, I was wondering, you guys were talking about, you know, that yes, there is still a little bit of maybe grumbling around having like a whole-city trash service, but maybe you guys can take that down into a smaller bite size and look at maybe just doing a whole-city recycling service and start with that, because then maybe people who don't recycle, or maybe the people who choose their trash service, their trash service doesn't have a recycling, and so that maybe they'd be able to participate in that. And then, my other question is, with windmills and backyard windmills, is there, do you guys know what the, like, our zoning and codes are as far as like people having windmills on their property, and how much property you need to have that?
I'll answer with kind of like a broader question. Our charge today was to come with kind of a high level, and the next eight months, we are going to be taking a lot more time to review and debate and get into a lot of the specifics. So, I think like the windmills and other things like that will come as we look at it and what makes the most sense. For example, like wind source that I discussed from Excel is a program that's already in place, so it wouldn't potentially mean windmills in people's backyards, but with that, still with the ability to purchase wind energy. So, I think there is a lot that's still left open. Nothing as of today is prescriptive and a recommendation, until we kind of put it in the action plan that's coming.
Awesome. Thanks, you guys, for your effort and for all your time.
Mr. Urban? Oh, wait, I had Mr. Fitzgerald first.
I just want to ask Adam if he knows where that 40% came from. I'm aware that we have just a number of houses in the tens that don't have any vehicle registered at that address, but 40% seems like a really high number.
Yeah, I'll have to go dig that out, but I can dig that out for you. I don't have the source available to me right now, but I can get it to you.
I was thinking that the at-at came up with that at some point.
Yes, yeah, we did.
Right.
It's a group, and I just...
Don't remember where that background came from.
We arrived at that, yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank each of you for your efforts and your willingness to volunteer and your ability to provide your expertise in this area. I really appreciate that. I especially appreciate the proposed next steps regarding our water facilities and talking about identifying pharmaceutical drop-off resources for wastewater protection, and we currently have a couple of those, so I appreciate that focus, because that also intersects with our opioid addiction crisis as well. I'm curious as to what intersections or what next steps can be looked at with regard to urban farming or agricultural efforts to include more of the urban farming efforts in the city, and how can that be implemented more into this plan, or if that was ever discussed in your committee work at all, or how that plays into this?
Hello, I'm Dan Gravy, and thanks for your input and your question. We haven't spent a lot of time addressing urban agriculture specifically up to this point. Wheat Ridge is relatively ahead of quite a few other communities in the metro area in terms of ordinances around urban agriculture, and so, in some ways, we're doing quite well already with regards to expanding urban ag in the community. These other areas will probably have to be addressed, and particularly land availability, and incentives to use it for that purpose, but it's certainly something with the makeup of the group that we're going to dig into deeper, so...
Okay. And for anybody that's interested in that, I'd be glad to work with you on that, and specifically, as an example, potentially, the Lutheran Medical Campus might be an opportunity for some urban agricultural opportunities as well, so that's something to consider. The, there was another question I had, as it relates to working with local restaurants and recycling, what's been the focus on that, or what specific programs are you looking at in developing some kind of, are you guys looking at any specific programs on that, or how does that look?
I just still wanted to kind of back up to your urban ag. Green building, obviously, when I talked about that, there's also the focus on the sites, and that's where I believe that can come in. I know personally for the group, there's a lot of expertise here on urban ag, and a lot of involvement with local farms as well, so we would welcome your input in that regard, too. Right now, like I said, with the recycling efforts, we're most familiar, I think, with what Five Fridge's Farms have been doing with some of the local restaurants and other things, but I believe Joy, you had some...
Yeah, I'm there at one.
So, we met, who was on the Waste Management Committee? Who was it that talked about the restaurant program?
It was Five-Fridge.
It was Five-Fridge, yeah. So, what they do is collect food waste from restaurants to use for compost, so really excellent program. We want to use as an example, and I don't know, at least a minimum, educate the community as to what they're doing, to see if we can't get that program bigger and better.
You know, I'm looking over this, you have touched, more than touched, examined six big areas. It's making me realize what a heavy job this was, that you not only, you identified, as well as looked at where we've been, possibly where we're going, and if you did nothing else but hang in there with these six areas, it would be totally amazing to me. It's kind of given us an opportunity to see where we're at in this whole endeavor, and I'm very impressed with this. This reminds me of the kind of thing you see with a Dr. Cog grant of a great deal amount of money. So, as volunteers, I can't stop congratulating you and thanking you, and I'm glad to hear that you're going to go forward. And one of our other council members would like to say something, but I personally thank you, I really, really do. Genevieve?
Well, first of all, also thank you for all of the time you spent for meeting with people and meeting with each other, and I heard there was wonderful discussion on various topics, so thank you for your time, and I agree with the mayor that I know there's a lot of expertise standing right here, so we appreciate you stepping up and doing that. I'm approaching the end of my term for four years, and four years ago, I wanted to talk about trash recycling and stormwater, and here we are, four years later, and there's nothing done. So, this is a wonderful assessment you've done of all these areas, so thank you. So, we have right now an assessment that you've done, and as you go into the next eight months of all the work you're going to do, thank you for the work you're going to do in the future, here's my advice: be bold. I really think it's the time for Wheat Ridge to be bold. Step out there, pick something that we can be a leader in, and come up with solid action steps. Not, "Let's research this, let's research that," but solid action steps to bring in front of council, and that you have the support of the community, so that the council needs to make a decision, and let's put our money where our mouth is. And are we going to hire somebody to help the city do this, because other cities have employees, full-time employees dedicated to this? Or are we just going to continue talking about it, and four years from now, are we not going to have a trash and recycling, because everybody's arguing about it? I think that's ridiculous. So, I think, for example, coming up with a trash service with recycling, a contract to give out to our citizens, and if you want to opt out, you can, but in other cities that have done that, the majority went for it. It reduces the trucks on your streets, it reduces the maintenance, it reduces emissions, it reduces a lot. So, that's one thing that was a hot topic for me. The other one is the stormwater, that why don't we have that? Why do all the other cities have it? But no, not in Wheat Ridge. We don't do it. So, please, be bold, come up with action steps that this council is forced to look at and take an action on, and I know it's easy for me, not running for office, to sit here and say that, but I really believe that. It's for the benefit of all, and that's why the Sustainability Committee, you know, came forward, and we even had discussion on this council about your committee, and I'm so glad it went forward. I'm so thankful for all the work you did, and just thank you, and I know you're dedicated people, you're going to come up with great ideas, and I really appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, Jen, for your enthusiasm, and I think that one thing that we have recognized in our initial research is that Wheat Ridge is a little behind. So, we plan to come forward and take care of that with your support.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Well, I have two questions and a suggestion.
Okay.
Okay, the first question is, I presume that reduce urban heat island effect, translated into English, means plant trees? Is that right?
Yeah, essentially, and then it also talks about like roads and asphalt and buildings that will absorb heat and then release it back into the atmosphere, because there's a lack of vegetation.
Okay, and in the transportation area, may I suggest that as you consider, as you continue, you consider connection to our two Gold Line stations?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Coming light rail, for sure.
Good. Now, a question. Do I remember that when this committee was formed, there was a time limit on this committee? And do we need an agreement for this committee to continue? The, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, it was originally six months, we extended it to a year, correct?
Correct.
So...
So, we've done it.
May of 2018 is what we understand our deadline for final action plans, and we intend to have any...
I don't know. Do we need to do anything else?
I have a question.
Sure.
Patrick, can we get a website up, or just link them into our website, so that citizens can go on there?
Of course.
And they can also look at, you know, this report, and they can actually feel like they're part of what we're trying to do here?
Yeah, we'll dedicate a page on our website.
Okay. All right, great, thank you.
You got this council so excited here, they all want to talk.
I'd like to add...
Now, what do you want?
Well, yeah, now, what do you want? Demand, demand, demand. May I ask for a consensus that we direct the city manager to give his report on energy audits, including the glass recycling program?
The, what was the last part? Glass recycling program?
Yeah, the glass recycling program that, the test, that...
I don't believe we move forward on that. The direction from City Council was to wait for this committee to be formed to take up that issue.
So, we could...
But we have some energy audits that we can bring forward to you at some point to let you know how those went. We've done numerous ones over the last several decades. I think we finished a couple in the last couple of years, which we can bring forward, if that's what you... We did an energy audit on the Active Adult Center in the last couple of years, the Rec Center, I think we're doing, we might be doing a new one here. Is that what you're asking for?
That's what I'm asking for, just how many buildings have been done, what hasn't been done?
Sure.
How can we move forward? And then, as a separate item, maybe somebody else wants to ask for consensus on glass recycling?
I think we ought to get an opinion from our committee, even though, of course, we would like to see that happen. The glass recycling, you saw the presentation, I'm sure.
You would like our opinion as to whether we should see that audit?
Whether the city should go forward with, they were talking to us about a three-month...
Yeah, and again, the direction we got from City Council was for this committee to form and wait till they provide recommendations on a bigger-picture environmental actions plans, and that was one of the issues that we were told to wait on. If you'd like us to bring it back, we can, but we did receive direction on that to wait for the committee.
So, we'd like to know what your feelings are about it.
The committee definitely recommends that you go forward with that contract.
Thank you, thank you.
So, I'll just modify that to say that I asked for a consensus that council direct staff to initiate the glass recycling program test.
Can we have a discussion about that?
Well, this was, sure, sure.
So, there was a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, Patrick?
I'm sorry, Mr. Urban?
There was both a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 of the Clear Intentions process, and so, when you say go forward with the contract, I'm not sure...
Yeah, I think we would, Mr. Dahl and I were speaking to, we should bring it back to study session and have another discussion, because it's been a while, and I don't remember exactly, but there was a test period where we would, I think, locate three or four different bins, and we'd have to, but we're looking for sponsorships from businesses to do it, to pay for it, so I think it'd be best to bring it back for more discussion.
Yeah, as much as everybody wants to sort of jump into this and want to support recycling, I think we need to be intentional about what we're doing before we go forward with the Clear Intentions contract, but I think that there was both a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, and I'd like to see what that looks like and the costs involved, and also come back to them and make sure their costs are still the same before we say yea or nay on that.
To be clear, we're just asking for a consensus to look at that. We can't buy consensus, direct staff to go engage into a contract, that has to come to a business meeting, so I believe that if we could have that come back to us, is what we were asking.
We have a consensus on that?
We do.
Do you understand what we did with that?
Not really, but I'll listen. I'll listen to it again on the tape.
I will just say that we did hear from Clear Intentions, they were one of the groups that we interviewed, and we were impressed with what they had to offer, and being as they were part of the previous group of the Sustainability Policy and Plan, and that they had that in place before we came on, I think it is great to take another look at that going forward.
Good. We'll proceed with that. Mr. Dahl, you look like you have something you want to say? Nope. I believe we're done.
Well...
You've done a great job.
The second...
Now, why?
Yeah, demand, demand, demand. I asked for consensus that staff report to us on the energy audits.
Oh, you didn't get your...
Right.
consensus on that, please? Thank you. Great.
Should go watch some Broncos?
Oh, I forgot about that. What did they do?
Do you have elected officials matters?
Thank you, again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did, at the end of our business meeting, we didn't go through our typical items that we like to go through, starting with city managers matters?
Sure, the score is seven to zero. First quarter, four minutes and 50 seconds left. Broncos ahead.
Broncos...
Broncos ahead. Just real quickly, we're working to wrap up the 2018 proposed budget, should be delivered to City Council this Friday. We'll also make it available to the public. We probably won't make it available until maybe Monday, so maybe you guys have a chance to at least look at it. We'll put it on the website, it'll be available here. I highly encourage you to, when you have a chance to start looking at it, if you have questions, don't wait for the study session, please send us emails, schedule a meeting with us, we'd love to sit down, and if there's questions that will help you understand the budget better, we'd love to do that. Of course, we can repeat those questions in the public hearing, if you want to make sure that they're done at the public forum, too, but our plan is to do a formal presentation to City Council on October 2nd, so that gives you, I think, three weekends to review the proposed budget. Thanks.
City attorneys?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerk?
I have something. Is it on? No? It is? Okay. This picture was dropped off at City Hall, and it was taken by, put together by a man named John Colvin. He is a Wheat Ridge resident, and he works for Sursa. And these are pictures from the Carnation Festival, and he gave this to the city, and so I don't really know what you want to do with it, but I thought I should, you know, make a special presentation. He didn't want to come in, he said I could do it, so, anyway, again, from John Colvin, who is a Wheat Ridge resident who works for Sursa. That's our insurance person, so I guess we can find a place around City Hall to put it, so...
Is that from this current, the last...
From this year's Carnation Festival, there's, oh, some of the tents, a couple of the, oh, fire truck and dancing and that, singing bus, well, the Shriner's Bus and Western airs and the...
Court Royalty.
Walt Pettit and Wanda Seng and Dominic Breton with Leah Dozeman, and the rest of the just kind of parade... singing bus, well, the Shriner's Bus and Western Airs, and the Court Royalty, Walt Pettit and Wanda Sang and Dominic Breton with Leah Dozeman, and the rest are just kind of parade pictures, but...
We'll find a great place to hang it.
It's all on one, one piece of material.
Okay.
It's not eight separate pictures, it's...
Well, thank you for bringing that to us.
Yeah, I'll pass it around.
Anything else from the city clerk?
I did think it would be nice if we acknowledged, the 16-year anniversary doesn't happen very often, that we have a meeting right on 9/11, to acknowledge the citizens who lost their lives, and especially, not especially, but the citizens and the first responders who lost their lives on 9/11 in 2001, and know that we, you know, still remember their sacrifice and work for it, and also send concerns now to the people of Florida. My brother, who had passed away a few years ago, was a chef in Key Largo, and I was very surprised to see the restaurant that he had worked on since Hurricane Andrew was named Snappers, and some of you may have seen it on television, and just the whole turtle club in the back, and it's just destroyed, and it's really sad, I'm sure that's just one example, but everybody's got their own personal stories, but I just wanted to mention that, because it was dear to my heart, and I hope they can rebuild, because it's a really nice place. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that today is 9/11, and I'm sure that all of us have memories of that day that we will never, ever forget. I often think of the families, where parts of the families were lost in the structure, and it just, it's not a good memory, it's just not. I'll never forget the shock of that and appreciation of those firemen who went in there and policemen and tried to rescue people and lost their own lives. Okay, let's start with District 1.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. Very quickly, I have the roofing permits and inspections, biweekly report from the city treasurer. To date, we've processed 5,035 roofing permits, and we have 2.2 million and a little more in revenue. And in our expenses, we have, as contract labor, we have spent only 372,000 of that. I'd also like to remind everybody, the Farmers 5,000 is this weekend, and the Wheat Ridge High School cheer and pom are out there cheering everybody on, but the poms have their cow pie bingo, and we actually get our steer from one of our residents, and cow pie bingo is basically, you have a bingo number that you've purchased for $2, and if the cow goes on your spot, you win 500 bucks. That's how we raise funds at the farm. So, come on down and watch our cow pie bingo, even if you don't want to run the race, and it'll be on Sunday at the Farmers 5,000. Thank you.
We paint a big grid on the grass.
Thanks for spelling that out for us, I wasn't quite clear on how that all worked.
Those details were really fun.
Just wanted to acknowledge all the first responders and everybody that's responding to Hurricane Irma, it's by, just a coincidence, that my mother-in-law is also named Irma, and wanted to also acknowledge all those who were lost and all those who sacrificed everything on 9/11, and encourage everybody to come out to the Farmers 5,000 this weekend, and also wanted to invite everybody to come out to the Cool Duo 5K on October 7th at St. Peter and Paul School. And then, as was mentioned in the Sustainability Committee with respect to taking pharmaceuticals seriously, there is a website offered by the state of Colorado, and that is take meds seriously.org, and that provides safe disposal information as to where you can dispose of your medications, and Wheat Ridge, that is at the Wheat Ridge Pharmacy, just over there on 38th, and at the Walgreens at 44th and Wadsworth. So, if you don't know where to take them, you can take them there, and they will dispose of them properly for you. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I have nothing. I have nothing tonight, except I'd like to ask Zach, do they take Sharps? So, as a diabetic, I have a lot of Sharps.
I don't believe that they take Sharps, no. Sorry.
Walgreens would be a possibility. Nope, then I'm just going to say goodnight.